Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 9th, 2016 meeting of the Milton School Committee. Before we begin, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, a couple of items on the agenda. First, we've had a request from one of the members who is unavoidably detained, at least for the beginning and perhaps for the entire meeting, to defer a couple of items. And so what I propose to do is to move the Chair's report down under the Approval of Minutes, which is number nine, in the event that Member Walker can make it by that time. And if not, we'll defer those items until the next meeting. And second, I would like to reverse the order of executive session. In other words, put collective bargaining strategy at A and Approval of Minutes at B. So, without objection, we'll make those changes to the agenda. All right, on to Citizen Speak. Mara, do we have anyone for Citizen Speak? No one for Citizen Speak. So we move quickly on to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Chairman Zulus. First, I want to report, and I've reported to the School Committee, that we had a very smooth beginning of school for transportation, to the lunch program. And I sent a quick email blast out today, even with the heat, as you saw coverage on the news. The Framingham Schools had half a day today. Jackie Morgan, our food service, delivered containers and ice water and cups to each of our elementary schools. The middle and high school principals thought they were all set. All the bubblers were working. Big fans in the upper hallways. The athletic director worked with the coaches. We saw every single principal. Glenn Pavlicek, Janet Sheehan, and myself have visited every school, and they felt very comfortable for the last two days. So, we have very resilient children and families that sent the children dressed appropriately. I want to tell you, to a student, I think it was very poignant at the Tucker yesterday to see your advancement preschool students walking in like they were college seniors. And we are going to do at another presentation, a summary of our innovative preschool. But to see those two classes, the innovative preschool started at seven o'clock, and when we were there at nine o'clock, I said, "How many of you went to school before?" And they all raised their hands. And so, as the preschool teacher said to me, "They think you're talking about two hours ago." And so, right up to Milton High School, reminding the viewing public that this Friday is the first opening football game, home football game. And it's an event that's begun a tradition for elementary and middle schoolers, and the game is underneath the lights. And there'll be a flyer in my email blast tomorrow detailing that. Last night, we had a meeting, the School Committee, our CPAC members, and our principals met with the Public Consulting Group, who will be conducting our special education study, program review. In the world of special education, we're required to have program reviews, aspects of the special ed program, or the entire program. I want to compliment Glenn Pavlicek and Tracy Grandow, our People Personnel Director. They created an RFP. They did a tremendous amount of work going over the bids. And we've settled and signed a contract with the Public Consulting Group. Dr. Donahue, Ms. Padera, and Mr. Zulus were there last night. And they have a very aggressive schedule. They are going to, first of all, they'll be looking at the organizational structure, our special education programs and services, our placements, inclusion, extended year services, and the consistency of special education practices across the school district. Very aggressive, and they are looking at, they've given extensive requests for data, student data. They're going to see over thirty different focus groups, and they took input from the group last night about additional focus groups that the, any CPAC members, or principals, or School Committee members wanted to include. They'll be doing visits within the school. And then they plan to report out in a draft form in December, and their final presentation in January. There will be public meetings for their presentation. I found it very impressive, very thorough. They have recently been in Somerville, and I think the response was very positive from the CPAC. We heard from the CPAC president today. And I'd invite anyone who was there last night who would like to add anything that I skipped.
Well, I'd just say that, I'll jump in and say that it was a very well-attended meeting. It was, I believe it was a publicly noticed open meeting, and we had a lot of members of the leadership team, the school leadership team. As you noted, several members of the CPAC, there was press there as well. So it was a very well-attended, public meeting, a lot of exchange, a lot of input, and I thought it was very positive. Ms. Padera.
I just was really impressed again with Tracy Grandow, our new People Personnel Director. And I think she did a great job at helping direct the meeting. And I think we have really involved parents that are really caring about this process and excited about this process, as well as the leadership team that's excited to get involved. So I thought it was really well done.
Dr. Donahue.
Yeah, I'll echo those comments and say, I thought that there were some excellent ideas that were brought up from the floor at the meeting, and the Consultant Group was, you know, very amenable to incorporating those and, you know, ensuring that everybody's voices were heard and priorities were recognized.
And they told us the recommendations will be roadmap, short and long-term recommendations. And I mentioned to Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and Tracy Grandow, every Friday there'll be contact telephone calls with the firm and Tracy Grandow, checking the progress of the evaluation. And I suggested that Assistant Superintendent Sheehan sit in on those calls so that she can facilitate for Tracy Grandow how to move the system and really open up the Milton Public Schools so that, across the system, these classroom observations and focus groups are facilitated easily and quickly so that the study can go on in the program evaluation. So that was very positive last night. I'll put out an email blast tomorrow, but I want to also remind everyone that on September 15th, we have a very strong music program here in the Milton Public Schools. And the applied music lessons, families signing up for their children to take music lessons after school will be on September 15th from 7:00 to 8:30, signing up. And two very positive notes in the end. We have issues of traffic in each of our schools, and the traffic at the Pierce had become an issue. And Member Sheila Varela worked all summer with Lieutenant Alba from the Milton Police and Dr. Karen Spalding, checking in, Dr. Spalding with us. You cannot minimize the amount of work that they did evaluating the site last spring, watching the traffic patterns, coming up with different plans. They brought in the leadership team. And to Sheila Varela, Lieutenant Albert, and Karen Spalding, to an individual, to a parent, to an employee, the response is phenomenal. The public and the parents accepted the new plan. We were over there for the first two days, and I have to tell you, even Mike Lynch said he used to have to give himself an hour if he was at the MPEG site at the Pierce. And he just said, "Now it's just like driving to the Pierce School in the middle of the day." So, big round of applause. And there's been a traffic adjustment at the Glover School, which we believe has also facilitated the traffic. So, I cannot thank you enough on behalf of the system, the buses. And you really don't understand the impact, because then the buses get to the Colley Clark Cunningham faster, and ultimately to the Glover and Tucker. And Dr. Pavlicek and I have spent a great amount of time in the last two years making sure that school starts on time and students get home in a timely manner. And I'm telling you that our calls have been minimal. So thank you very, very much. And in closing, a nice new story on school happenings. We have a marching band at Milton High School that began a few years ago. So they approached me, and they wanted uniforms. And so, they said that they would go online to a, the name of the...
GoFundMe.
GoFundMe, sorry.
GoFundMe. And they advertised within the school district, and they were buying used uniforms. They explained to me, "Because you have to buy a hundred, because these are an investment for the rest of the band's life, and you might have somebody tall or somebody short." And they raised approximately $5,000, and the Copeland Foundation saw their efforts and matched them. And yesterday, the palettes arrived, and today we saw Gary Good in one of the marching band outfits, right to, right from his head to his toes. So if you're at the, if you are at the football game on Friday night, you'll be able to see the marching band. And I should have had Ms. Varela tell the story. Will you talk about, just for a moment, about the camp?
Yeah.
A lot of participation.
Yeah. So, this year in particular, because the marching band's been growing so much, the past couple of years, what they've done is they have band camp, just like the athletes come back early. They do a full week from either eight to two or eight to three, I can't remember. Outside, it was a real hot week, too. And they basically put together what they would do as their competition numbers, what they'll do is their halftime show and also competition, because they will compete a couple of times this year. And they're also going to march in more parades, because they're growing and have such a finely, I think finely tuned band, very gifted. So, they do a tribute to Stevie Wonder. It's pretty fun, I'm not going to lie. And with color guards and marching and the fact that they have these brand-new, well, I'll say used, but really nice new uniforms. It's going to be an exciting season for them, definitely, yeah.
And again, I promise this is in closing. So our first two days of school, we had Dr. Thomas Hare from Harvard speak to the entire staff, our custodians, instructional aides, our administrative assistants on inclusion. And then the ending of that meeting was the marching band coming in. I tell you, remarks have been, "It's the best opening that we've ever had. We knew how to do it right." And then the next morning, we had our attorney Paige Tobin on some legal issues. You were well represented by Mike Zulus bringing greetings from the School Committee. And then I presented the district's data, explained to everyone who we were and where we were going. And I think it was a very, very positive start in beginning for our teachers. So thank you for bringing that greeting. It was very positively received. So, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Madam Superintendent. The next item on the agenda is the Vice Chair's report. Ms. Padera.
I don't have a donation of like $300,000 this time, sorry. But it's, I'm talking about that donation. So I just wanted to give an update on the MPEG studio tour, because I think we had some requests for that. It's not quite ready for primetime yet, but it's, Mr. Zulus and I went down the other day. It's looking quite impressive. I think they're waiting for a curtain and some sound issues to be resolved. So the report is, we should be ready by the end of September to do a tour and maybe do a meeting, or a meeting down there. So, I will give an update as we get closer.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, the Finance Subcommittee report. I think we just have one warrant, and I'll turn this over to Ms. Padera. I think we just have one warrant that we should act on.
Yeah.
Do you want to take that?
I could turn that over to Mr. Pavlicek.
Okay.
You have warrant number 10, which was dated September 3rd, 2015, which was signed last week, in the amount of $238,789.72.
Move approval.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. All right, moving on to the Policy Subcommittee report. And I believe I'll be turning this over to Dr. Donahue. Kevin, are you going to talk about the difference between first and second reading? I could, you want to talk about...
You're more than welcome to.
Just to give a quick overview, just for the, for the, yeah, just give a quick overview of what we're doing, just for the viewing audience. When we adopt policies on the School Committee, in order to have a fulsome deliberation and consideration of policies and proposed amendments, we typically go through two readings. The first reading is the effort to review the policy, the proposed policy initially, get the feedback from the Superintendent, get the feedback from the Policy Subcommittee, and to ask questions. We then have an additional time to consider and to review the proposed policy and the proposed changes, and that is prior to what's called a second reading. At the second reading, we can have some additional discussion, additional discussion on the policy, and then, again, ask for the Superintendent's recommendation on that. And then we typically will have a vote on whether to adopt or reject that policy. And I think the Policy Subcommittee has done yeoman's work in bringing us several policies for first reading and a policy for second reading. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Donahue. Hopefully I didn't step on your toes.
No, not at all.
Kevin?
Not at all. So the first policy that we're going to deal with is Student Discipline, policy JK. And if you look in your packet, I've enclosed the policy as it stands now, and then there's an edited or redlined copy of the policy for your review. So for this policy, it's a simple phrase deletion on the advice of legal counsel. And I'm open to any discussion or comments, commentary.
Good, thanks.
Yeah. So...
And so I guess we'll put this on for a second read next meeting on September 30th, and hopefully get approval at that time.
Excellent. So the second policy up for discussion, Disciplining Students with Special Needs, policy JKF. And you'll notice that the opening paragraph, there has been some revisions to the final two sentences there. And then the remainder of the policy is unchanged. So again, any comments or thoughts?
So Kevin, it appears that this is really a clarification of the definition? Is that really what's intended?
Yes, yeah.
If I, if I, may I add something?
Yep, you can add, yeah, sure.
Please.
I think it's valuable, I referred to our attorney Paige Tobin speaking to the entire staff on the second morning of school. And one of, she did some clarification on school discipline, school discipline with all students, students with special needs, and the new restraint policies that are going to come out in January. And so she clarified, so this is very timely, she clarified this actual edit with the entire staff.
All right, so we'll put that on for a second reading as well for the next meeting. Third on the list, it's a bit of a departure, the evaluation of the Superintendent. So there are some changes in the third, and then in the final paragraph, that we made to the wording at the advice of counsel, more specific references to the guidelines, and then slight rewording of the initial sentence in the final paragraph. So let's see, fourth policy is our hazing policy. And I will point out that there is a minor typo at the top of this. This is policy JICFA-R, not E. So we'll have that corrected for the next, for the second reading. So this was also submitted to our legal counsel, who had some revisions, some clarifications throughout the policy. I think that it reads better, and it is a sort of better policy for those, but they're not terribly substantive. Yes.
So, just, I'm sure this is something simple, but this is blue line versus red line. But this is the same format, so anything in blue is a change?
Correct, yes.
And anything other than that is the same?
Correct.
Okay, that's the editor.
Yeah, I'd just say, if I may, Kevin, I'd just say it appears that this is more declarative in terms of what reported, what we do with incidents of hazing, and what the position of the public schools is with respect to hazing. And it also adds, it also appears to add a provision to protect persons who report or assist in hazing, which I think is a very good substantive ad, just a, it's a very good substantive ad, so.
So our next policy is the sexual harassment policy. And there are several changes throughout the document. One of them is, there's a sort of a formatting glitch or error, so the full page essentially of blank space is unintentional and is not part of the policy.
Yeah, I just, because we don't have it up there, I'd just point out that the substantive ads, or what appear to be the substantive ads, which appear to be very well-taken, are the widening of the person who can file a complaint under that, and expansion of that opportunity, and also the fact that all employees are provided a copy of this every year, and new hires get it on employment. I think those are very good, again, very good substantive ads.
This policy is in our handbooks, and we're very conscious, when the DSC comes in to evaluate the system, that all of these contact people and write-down to the state organizations are updated. And it's in all of the teacher handbooks, student handbooks.
All right, so that concludes our set of policies for first reading. And as the Chair alluded to, we have a policy for second reading this evening. It's our domestic violence leave policy. And I don't believe, I don't believe we've included a copy of the policy that was submitted for the first read back in March. But the substantive change is to the highlighted paragraph on the first page, which I'm happy to speak to, if there's anybody who has questions at this time, both as to the specifics of the change and what they are, or thoughts behind it, or anything like that.
Yeah, Kevin, I think it is important to flesh it out a little bit.
So by way of brief background discussion, in the first reading, when this policy was submitted, there were two points of discussion, two that had come up. The first was the timing of this leave, whether or not employees would be required to exhaust other leave before having this leave available to them. And the second issue that came up was whether or not this would be paid or unpaid leave. And this paragraph addresses both of those topics. And so it clarifies that this leave is to be used for its intended purpose, and to that point, when it is unfortunately appropriate to be taken, it can be taken, regardless of whether or not the employee has other forms of leave available to them. And secondly, it represents a departure from the submitted proposed policy in the spring, where this was proposed as a non-paid leave. And according to this policy, it will be a paid leave.
So, I'm sorry if I'm saying too much. If anyone else has anything to say, just please chime in. I do want to add on this. There was significant discussion of this policy at the first read. There was discussion of this issue. There was discussion of this issue at the previous Policy Subcommittee last year. I imagine there was significant discussion at this Policy Subcommittee. I will say that we are aware that the town has gone a different way on this. They have made it unpaid for other town employees. So this represents a departure. The town followed the Family Medical Leave Act, which makes it unpaid. I will say that for my purposes, and the way I feel about this, is because this statute and this policy is so specific and is so stringent in its requirements, that the likelihood of abuse is extremely low. Second, our understanding, my understanding from Assistant Superintendent Pavlicek, is that the cost of this is negligible, and it has been negligible, or would have been negligible in the past, and hopefully will be zero in the future. But again, it is not, cost doesn't seem to be an issue. So then the question is, in my mind, anyway, do you want an employee who has to face a court hearing because of abuse that's perpetrated against them, or some counseling, do you want that employee to have to decide, "Well, can I go to that counseling, or can I go to that hearing because I don't have vacation, or because I can't afford it because I'm going to miss a day's pay?" And it seems to me that, given that the policy is very stringent, given that the likelihood of abuse is low, given that the cost is not negligible, that the right thing to do here is to make it a paid leave. It's different from other kinds of leave. It's different because of the specific statutory requirements and the specific requirements. So I don't see the possibility or the likelihood of a slippery slope. That's, some would argue, that, you know, you might see a situation where this opens the door to all kinds of other paid leave. I think this is so specific that that's not likely. And so in my mind, this is the right thing to do. So, the only thing I would say is, I just, I think it's important to get the recommendation of the Superintendent on this.
I support this, I support this policy, and what you've recommended from the Policy Subcommittee.
Ms. Padera.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, this is the type of thing that has progressed. You know, in the past, probably people used sick time or vacation time and didn't really tell anybody what was happening, because they were either embarrassed or, you know, didn't have the means to reach out and get support for this. So this also encourages that, to maybe get more help and to use this leave the way that it's intended. So I do support it in that I think that making it unpaid almost takes it away, the use of it in a way, because I would think a lot of people would be more likely to then use sick time and cover up maybe what's really going on there. So I do support it.
And then, some final comments. I think your comments are appropriate and well-taken. I would also sort of piggyback on your discussion about the decision that the town made, and... I would also sort of piggyback on your discussion about the decision that the town made, and, you know, I think it's perfectly appropriate to point out that collaboration between the schools and the town, you know, sometimes we take different paths, and it works better for the both of us because of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to you to call for a vote, Mr. Chair.
Well, if you have a motion, Dr. Donahue.
I have a motion that we adopt the newly-edited domestic leave policy, GCCD, as it appears before you.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Excuse my lateness.
Thus, I think, concludes the --
Yes.
-- report of the Policy Subcommittee. And we'll put those five additional policies on for second reading on September 30th.
Great. Sounds excellent.
And anything else that you develop in the interim? All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for August 7th. Any discussion, any motion, any thoughts about the minutes of August 7th? Well, I move approval, just to get the discussion going. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Pedera.
I'll just do my one edit, since it seems to be how many else people. The first page, at the last paragraph, the committee should keep an eye on the fact that, I think I said many, many of our meetings have data, not every meeting.
It's the next to last line, first page.
So that would mean, that would read that many of our meetings have data?
Yes.
Everyone just give me the high sign when you're ready. All right, Kevin?
May I ask a clarifying question?
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
So on Goal 1, the tuition-free kindergarten is the first line, and then the very, I'm trying to figure out where the last, because we went from that to override, park, and then the first goal is listed as FDK, but it doesn't say what is the goal, or am I missing that?
I think there at the top of page, where Mr. Olivera, who was the facilitator, clarified?
Top of the last page.
Okay. So that was the first one? I'm sorry, can I ask?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So that was the first one, develop a plan to introduce free FDK by January 2016. And that was the one at the last meeting that we had, no? That we had some conversation about?
Discussion about, that's right.
Was that the right wording?
That's right.
So I just wanted to make sure, since it's in here, if that was the right wording.
This was the retreat.
Right. Yeah. So our last meeting, we had a conversation about this goal, and there was some confusion about whether that was the actual goal that's listed here.
And that was?
So I'll tell you, my perspective on it was that that was, that correctly chronicled what happened at that meeting, and then we had subsequent discussion at the last meeting, which revised it. That's what, that's the way I interpreted it.
Okay. I just didn't know, since we're looking at these, does, so it was taken care of, the difference at our last, what you see as revision?
Yeah, at our last meeting. And so this, you know, these minutes are to reflect what happened on the 7th. So anything that happened on the 26th would be reflected in the minute minutes on the 26th. So I think it's appropriate to try to reflect what happened on the 7th. So if someone has a view that, well, that's different than what happened on the 7th, that's a different question than whether we have revised it subsequently.
Right. So I guess what I would just add in there then, like, I look at the, I'm sorry to belabor this, but I just think it's so important as we're approaching financial issues. On your Goal 1, Ms. Bagley-Jones says she thinks free full-day kindergarten is important, but should probably not be its own goal, but perhaps part of a larger goal. So I guess I, in these minutes, I'd like it to reflect that that's still what I thought. I didn't agree with the goal of we should develop a plan to introduce free kindergarten by January 16th.
Well, isn't there something else in there?
Because we didn't vote on --
Yeah, but there was something.
Yeah, there is no vote reflected, and there is some further discussion.
Later on.
Later on.
But at this meeting, I wouldn't have agreed to that, to introduce a plan.
Right.
So I don't, I want my name to be there that says I didn't agree with that as a goal.
Well, but no?
Well, if that happened.
Yeah.
I mean, the question is, did it happen? And so the question in my mind would be, when Jake listed the four goals, did you say, well, I don't agree that those are the four goals, the consensus four goals? So that's, to me, because these are just the minutes reflecting what happened that day.
Right. And I don't want to belabor the point. I guess this meeting can cover that, that I'm saying I clearly strenuously objected to that wording, but if I didn't say that at the end, I'm saying it now as, I don't know how to put that out there. But, I mean, I'm sure you all remember my arguing about it.
Yep.
So I don't want to be rude or belabor it, but I felt very strongly about it, and I thought I was really clear at that meeting, and that's not reflected in here.
Well, I guess the question is whether it's reflected earlier.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
But then, at the end, it looks like I agreed, that we all agreed to those goals.
Well, well.
It does say a plan. I think it's because it's a plan, but not that we do a plan, but not that it would be imminent.
Okay. So Ms. Varela points out that it does say, develop a plan to introduce it. So maybe I agreed to the plan.
Mm-hmm.
To develop a plan, but not to --
That it would be imminent.
Imminent, to go in January 16th. So I can leave it as is, and it will be in these minutes, if that works.
Um, sorry, I will, are you --
I am, I just want to, I just want to be clear that I didn't, I don't agree with that at this point, or whatever.
You don't agree that this is correct, or you don't agree that you agreed to it?
I don't agree that I agreed with it. Even though, I don't know.
But it doesn't say that.
I know.
So the question is whether, whether there was a statement that anyone remembers at that time, so.
So these were the goals that were written down, and when Jake read them, I read them back to the group.
Yep.
And that's what was --
Right. And in retrospect, I'm saying I believe I made an error to not say I still firmly 100% disagree with that.
Okay.
So that maybe, just put it on as Ms. Bagley-Jones made her own error.
So.
And is now correcting it herself.
That's in today, that would be in tonight's minutes.
Exactly.
Not in the minutes from August 7th.
Exactly.
Does this mean we get to talk about this subject in the future again?
Hopefully.
Yes.
So, Chris, I'm sorry, because it does say, I was looking for the thing, at the end of that paragraph, so I'm sorry, let me tell you the page. Page 2? Page 3, sorry.
Page 1, 1, 2, 3.
Uh-huh. So at the top of the paragraph, the last sentence said, Ms. Bagley-Jones said the goal should be, develop a plan by January 2016 to offer free full-day kindergarten to implement by June 2016.
Then I'm correcting it now, because I think the language, for me, for this minutes, for tonight's minutes, not for these, and I'm sorry, we can move on from this, but it was develop a plan, and we came up with language that felt satisfactory at the last meeting here. So I can live with those. So for tonight's minutes, it just reflects that I'm, whatever, I'm lost. I've lost myself.
I get it.
Yeah.
I get it.
Okay, I do too.
Yeah. Dr. Donahue.
If I may, your point is well-taken. I don't recall exactly this being the wording read back to us at the time. I will accede to the fact that it may have been, but I think upon reflection, if it were, upon reflection, I think it could be worded better, and we're in the process of doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let go of it now. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. All right. Moving on to, so as I said earlier, I'm going to, I think it's only courteous to respect the request of Member Walker to defer the item of the school committee goal, and we'll defer the item of school committee procedures until the next meeting on September 30th, when he can be here. So, having said that, no old business? Any next meeting agenda items? Ms. Varela.
I'd like to put the item of school supplies and mainstreaming school supplies for coming up, either I will do a report or speak to coming up with a plan to mainstream the purchase of school supplies in the Milton Public School Systems.
Okay. That'll probably go into, will that go into superintendent's report?
If Ms. Varela would report out, that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Donahue.
I think we should get back to the Strategic Initiatives Committee discussion. If not at the next meeting, then maybe the subsequent one.
I will, I will put that on for the next, the next meeting. Anything else?
I'll give a report out on the studio space.
The studio space. All right. And you will have had a wellness, transportation, and facilities subcommittee meeting. So I think we'll definitely put on transportation.
Yeah, I can report on that.
And wellness.
Yeah, I mean, it might be good to try to stagger some of the subcommittee reports that don't report every week.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So maybe looking at the agenda, if wellness isn't on the next one, it should be on the one after. Transportation's on next time. Mary, do you think that would work?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just to try to pay attention to.
Time, that's good.
And when we do the wellness, we want to talk about it, wellness with the school committee, the youth risk survey, and then report out to the school committee. So that would give us a month.
Yeah, I think that would be better.
I'll talk to Leroy. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
No, and just to pay attention when we're planning subcommittee reports, if we can try to stagger some of them.
So just for clarifications, that transportation would be the next one, right?
Transportation's on, and I'll talk to Leroy there. I think Facilities is having a meeting, and the question is whether it makes sense, whether there'll be anything to report out after one meeting. My guess is no, but we'll, we'll see. Okay. So we'll plan for transportation anyway, and maybe, excuse me, maybe Facilities. And just because we put it on the agenda doesn't mean it needs to be a long report. Report could be very short.
Yes.
So we'll manage that. All right. Citizens speak. I don't see anyone there. And so with that, we will move to executive session. And let me make sure I get my motion. I still haven't written this down, so at some point I will. I think maybe by the end of the year. So I'm going to move that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of reviewing minutes and discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining, which, if discussed in open meeting, could have a detrimental effect on bargaining positions. So I'll move to adjourn to executive session, not to reserve, not to, I got to write this down, not to return to regular session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Zulich, yes. Ms. Pedera.
Yes.
Dr. Donahue.
Yes.